...tonight and is board appointments to the healthcare authority. As I've done this past, my plan is just to take the names up in order, one by one, and obviously carry that. Any discussions as to board appointments?
I certainly wish we could do something in the business for safety and change. Because, you know, we're voting for one person and in doing that, we're voting against two people. And they're all very, very good, good board members. And I don't, and I just wish we could do something different. I mean, I don't, this is...
Well, it's always a good slate. If you remember, the reason that it's set up this way, when it was, our city was awarded the city, individual awards had an appointment, and I think the mayor had three appointments because the city had seven total appointments to that board. When it became a healthcare authority, the logic was that they would submit three names that we would consider as, because no longer do we have individual award appointments to it, that they would submit three names that we would consider. We didn't like those three names, we could reject all three of them. They could submit three more, and if we didn't like those three, we could reject all three of those. And at that point, the council could select their own individual. So if there was, it gave checks and balances to it. It's a serving on that board, I can tell you. It is the most involved board I have ever been part of on any level. I mean, it requires, there are probably six meetings a month minimum for every board member. And as you rise up to the ranks of board, there are more than that. I have something involved with the hospital pretty much every single day of the week at this point. So it's one of those things that it takes, it takes a board member that is really committed to the task. The names that you receive, the board that sees names, how we get these names is if it's a city management appointee. Sandra Suddeth was reappointed last night by the city of Jacksonville to her, to the seat she's been serving in. Last week, Bill Williams was reappointed by the city of Oxford to the seat he has been serving in. And the county commission is set to make an appointment for one of their vacant seats as well that has expired. So they all, the general rule of thumb is that nominations are taken by any board member can nominate anybody. So if you as a council member want to have somebody considered, you give a board member, let them know. I will tell you that because I sit on the council as well, that I do not make nominations. Because I feel like it could be argued that I'm unfairly skewing the process. So I simply don't make any nominations and I don't vote at the board level for anybody that the city management would vote.
But, so you understand, so I'm, I'm prepared because when you're voting against somebody, I mean, and this, this guy, if you vote against me, I'm gonna take you personally.
Well, let me finish. All of these candidates, when their name is submitted, they're approached by the board. They're asked if they're willing to serve. They understand the process. They understand that their name is going on about a three, that they may or may not be selected to serve in this capacity. But they're not stepping into it blindly, knowing, thinking that, hey, they nominated me, I'm gonna be on that board. They know that, that it is a voting process. They understand the process. It's fully vetted with every candidate that goes out to each seat. So they're not blind to the fact that we've got to make a selection out of one of the three. They know that going in, that they have a thirty-three percent chance of being selected to that board when they agree to have their name submitted.
So just to be a little bit accurate, I think, and I guess if I say that in fast, if certain people are gonna get voted, if it's gonna go out there, the board will be able to live with you.
Right.
And that, that, I think, I don't, how many people on this board?
Fifteen.
Fifteen people. And the city has seven, seven board members.
So then the chief of staff is one, the chief of staff is a city member. And then the, I'm not sure if I'm telling you right, the outgoing or the incoming chief of staff is also on the board. And then there's two each from the county Jacksonville and Oxford.
I completely think our part is what these states need. I mean, the slate is what it is. I think also a sense of diversity amongst these slate that is given to us is what I guess I'm looking for. When you have a board, a hospital board that is comprised of a majority of people in a specific area, it's not really showing the diverse, you know, community of the city. And I think it's important to have a voice of each person, you know, from every area of the city. So that's, I would say that's my concern. So I wish that when we proceed these slates, you know, we have people who are from all areas so that we're able to make that decision. I would just want to be a bit more diverse, you know, coming from our standpoint.
We were a few times, I mean, just looking at, I would, a situation like this, if we gotta go for three, it's almost easier to pick three from the same race and having a decision made upon that. Because if one, I just, I don't know. It's just one point about that law of profession. Yeah, I hate bringing up anything that will cover, I don't hate to qualify, qualify anything for the violence. But, I mean, and I think they've done a great job, but if there's somebody out there that can, that can be, that can improve this board or sit on the board. I mean, I guess it's a lot, a lot of things we don't really vote because we don't think these people need to rate the people. Like, I don't have, I gotta make a vote out of all three boards.
He came in there prior, he was Miller Stanley Graham when he's on the lawn with his tennis court. He's a bright member, but anyone, yeah, that's who that is.
No, all three choices are excellent choices. And the reality is, the healthcare authority wants actual board members. So pretty much every time you're gonna get, and that's the crux of Billy's problem, is that you're getting three highly qualified candidates every time. So you're asked to pick between three highly qualified candidates. They all are deserving of a position and, you know, it doesn't matter what slate we've seen since this has gone on, every member of that has been a deserving candidate for that board. So that's the struggle, I guess. You know, it'd be easier if it was like shortlisting somebody where you put two dogs in the race and you put one obvious guy that everybody's gonna pick. So it's easier to make that pick, but that's not what they're gonna do. So they're gonna put three highly qualified individuals and ask us to make that decision. It is uncomfortable in this process, I agree. And, you know, I chair that board at this point. So if we need to have a sit-down discussion with a couple of members of, you know, maybe we have a member from Oxford and a member from Jacksonville, I'm sure that, that they struggle with it just like we do. I've heard from the county commission that they struggle with it as well, so.
Bruce, I don't recall, the healthcare authority statute pursuant to which the healthcare authority was established, did it require, it did not require, it was a, so, okay. I just want to say, it allows it, okay.
So Jake, what you're saying is that Jacksonville and Oxford, that's three lines of way?
No, they have two names each. The county commission has two names.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But she's asking, are they given a slate, the same clause?
They're given the same slate, three, and every, every, every appointee goes through this process. That was the way that Bruce and I were engaged in those negotiations when the healthcare authority was created. And that's, that's how it was, this was the sticking point. And this solution that we're living with right now was kind of the compromise, if you will, in how we get appointees so that both sides had a real, genuine say. And I mean, if you had, you know, if you felt like somebody was just jamming a bunch of people down our throats, then we could, we have the opportunity to say no to all of them and then appoint them we feel like we need to appoint. So there is, there is that opportunity. It takes a little more time to do that, but if, that opportunity does exist. And that's the reason that the healthcare authority has to give you the names of the expired term, sixty days. We have to make our list to the appointing authorities sixty days prior to the vote, to the expiration of that term. So there is time to, you know, we, these names that were turned in on...
Well, we're getting sixty days within, within the letter of the contract.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so they were turned in a long time ago. We've had an opportunity, we could have addressed this earlier and rejected all of them, got another list of three if we, if we felt like that was needed, so.
If you would, I think it would be helpful if you did speak to the board about, about the process, since the other appointing authorities...
It would take a change to the high laws, I guess, right, Bruce? Who would require amendment of the articles of re-incorporation to the board. And require recurrence from this body, it does not require recurrence from the other appointing authorities.
A hospital board and this city man, and this council would have to agree to that. Just a discussion, you know, I think it'd be helpful.
I'll be glad to, to carry that forward.
Anything else on item? All right, let's go into item two, this appears on the consent agenda tonight and it is for restaurant refill gratification for crab beer, hot, ah, fruit. Y'all here, okay. Very good, y'all are here for the main topic, okay. Any, any discussion as to this issue, again, it's on the consent agenda.
I don't know how busy I've been, I've been busy with any issue whatsoever. When, when was that application, this was starting?
Everything had already been started and turned in.
No, we, we didn't. Okay, okay, listen, I mean, I think y'all are lying because, you know, I mean, I, it was, I just didn't, the token would get, not when I give it, like, to, to the body, I'm, I'm, I'm full over my everything. I wonder if anybody here do understand that, that you're at one point, one time, that it was out there that we were holding up the process and I don't think the process even started. And I don't know if we would have started that, I'm just, the negative publicity that you could give because I, I've received about five calls talking about how sorry we were, we need to deal with this, that, or whatever.
I sincerely apologize, but I only didn't manage to, so the previous management didn't do it.
Got you, okay.
Thank you all for being here. Can you think further on item two? Yeah, that's on the consent agenda. Okay, let's go into the discussion of garbage debris orders for the, she's came to ask memo from, from Bruce.
Yes, I, I don't think, I just wanted to put this on the agenda, just to remind everyone, continue to have this conversation that we found for public. So this is just something that Bruce brought together, and I know some of you, I was personally had an opportunity to be at the other, and just Lucy has, so it's other thing that we're still trying to get a, something that everybody is good with before we bring it back. But I just wanna share that with you all today. And then, and then the council is ready to bring it back for discussion and possibility of a change that they want to do with the orders. We can do it at that, I just wanna share that with you, with Bruce here.
So I appreciate that. And I think we all, based on, you know, comments and questions we got from the public and then the, the work session we had a couple of weeks ago. Now, I think the public does expect us to look, you know, look at this again critically. I know there's, you know, issues with, with going backwards, not understanding that. But, I mean, clearly that there's an issue that, you know, that needs to be addressed. So just open up, open up the floor again. I mean, I know what I do tonight, but, you know, based on, you know, other discussions I've had, certainly open up the floor again for continued discussion as to the garbage debris.
So we, we all went to, to side with Jake, we went to...
We did miss you, Jake.
Councilmember Jake, we did miss you a lot, but we went to touch it, so, for the island, we did, we did the counties conference. And we had some roundtable discussions with other cities, municipality leaders, mayors, and council people. Garbage debris was a conversation. And I found it was a big issue in, in almost every city, in, in every, every group I've been talking to which led to a lot of great conversation. But in, in these conversations, I realize the city of Madison has one of the lowest garbage payment fees throughout the entire state. And additionally, in, in a lot of cities like Jalina, who is, has a little bit, like, two thousand residents smaller than us, but, you know, they have an additional fee on their water payment where it was used for like household items and, and the roof pickup and things like that. So I think we gained a lot of insight about other cities, you know, how their policies stay, you know, regards to the garbage collection. And, you know, I'm ready to move forward. I, you know, my, my assessment would be to go back to picking up, you know, household items and trash and add additional, because the conversation started because of our financial issue, because I've been had a fee to the water, water bill. I don't know what the, how that would work with the water company. I don't know if we can talk to Turner about that quite yet, but I think that that would be a compromise between our financial issues as well as, you know, the community. So I don't know if Bruce will be able to talk to him.
I think we've had conversations about that, we have lots of sites, but it was a lot of things. So we're working together because some things we can bring online, but this is also addressed again.
Yeah, and I know a lot of people said, well, just add to the garbage, I mean, that we already paid. Well, I mean, we're like, what, how much money behind and people just not paying their garbage fees? So it's, it's almost unenforceable. I don't know how I would be moving forward with, with the public that I've contracted with and enforcing garbage, garbage payment fees, but a lot of people don't pay them. So it's like, how do you enforce those things on average?
That's the person that's willing, and there is a way, there's already a place in place right now that the board come to use. And City of Madison uses it as well, but it's definitely gonna demand more of, like, there is a way that we can actually get those fees back, and we just have to start ourselves, there is a way.
I would, I agree that we'll have to do something, whether it's raising the garbage fee or, or attacking on the water bill, or whatever it is that we've gotta do to adjust this to get it done. But I talked to David yesterday, in fact, about the idea of creating some kind of tiered payment system based off of income thresholds. We've got right now a bunch of folks that don't pay anything for garbage because of their income. But could they, could we create something that had a five and a ten and a fifteen or something like that so that everybody has some ownership in this problem? I think that when you take the ownership away from a, say, it don't cost you anything, there's no ownership in the problem either at that point. And I think that there needs to be some accountability put on every citizen in the city. Even if it's at a token number, that everybody has to pay at least something for it. Maybe it's three dollars a month, maybe it's five dollars a month, maybe it's eight dollars a month when somebody else is paying twelve or somebody else at a different income level. And I don't know what those income level thresholds might be. But it might be an opportunity to get full engagement from all our citizenry and thereby full ownership of the problem, which seems to be what's really lacking right now. It's hard for me to say, let's raise the fees and put it on the water bill and, and hit folks with it. Because the ones that we're hearing from, people we're all getting calls from, are the people that are doing the right thing. The guy that's dumping the trash in their front yard at night while they're asleep is not gonna do the right thing. And maybe he's never gonna do the right thing, but if he has some ownership in the problem too, then I, I just feel like maybe we get a better response, see why at that point. And I think it would help yield a more positive revenue stream for it all as well. The other thing that I wonder about is whether or not we can take, whether it's legal to take some of this recovery act funds and things like that to fund the equipment purchases for, you know, I, I think if we're gonna go back to doing this, we gotta have a third crew, right? We got two crews right now picking up rush. We can, we can go back to what we're doing it, and then the fun call's gonna change. You're still gonna get the call, but they're gonna say, why aren't you picking up my leaves? Or, nobody's needed it down my street in a month, because they're gonna dump the trash on the street again, and now we can't keep up with that problem. So you gotta have, if you're gonna do it, let's do it, let's do it right, let's get a third crew in there. But that takes equipment to do it, and that's, that's a big front-end cost there. Now, there remains cost and a replacement cost ultimately too, but, but the initial investment is significant there. And then you can find the manpower to do it too, is another issue. But, but looking at it from that perspective of can we find funds to buy the necessary equipment to, to equip a third crew? Can we find the manpower to run a third crew? And then where, can we find the funding to pay their salaries, wages, benefits? The diesel fees, the ticket fees, and all the other pieces that we gotta pay to, and the maintenance of the equipment and all of that stuff that we gotta pay, you know, what are the, what does that structure look like? Not sure I, I have the knowledge to answer those questions, but I know that we can define what kind of equipment costs. I know we can define what a crew would, would run us annually. And I know we, we've got a good number from history about what our tipping fees are. Those, those numbers are there, I just don't have them in front of me. But those are there, and then we can sit down and figure out what we collect. We know what we're collecting, we know what we're gonna have to collect in order to make it break even or at least come close to breaking even. We're managing it not coming even, breaking even now, but it would be nice if we got close to breaking even. I mean, if we can get it to break even, then we might have some extra dollars to pave some roads, to do some other things that, that our citizens would like to see done as well. But if we're gonna take additional monies to picking up mattresses and furniture, well, those bottles gonna get bigger. I mean, we don't have a money tree out there. And it's not that we're broke, but, because I don't, we're not, we're doing well as a city. But you can't keep perpetuating, that was the logic that got us to the decision to do this. I don't want us to lose sight of that in this process. But there is got to be a structure there, a financial structure, that can fund the upfront piece, pay for the pieces going forward. And how we do that with, with the rate change, whatever it is, is, I'm fully supportive of, but, but I'm as tired as anybody else of getting fucked up. And I know the citizens are tired of it.
Let me, so, here, everybody's at the same question. Now, when, when you go to me and you hear a different pay twenty-eight dollars flat for garbage fees, I'm like, God, dang it, that's more than twice what we're paying. Now, here's what I propose. I do propose adding time to the water fee, but with a caveat. We currently have certain people that are not paying for garbage fees. What I'm, what I'm proposing, what I would make a wish for, submit as my recommendation is, whatever we add to this, to the water fee, water bill, be non-exempt. You cannot be exempt from this. And here's why. I get, I understand, we have certain people that are on fifteen dollars. God bless them, I, I hope they get a break time, and I wish them well throughout our first year of life. But they're still living in the city, and some of these people are part of the problem. Because some of these people are giving their sons, running some of their dues, or paying somebody to come take this stuff and put it out on the street. So if we make that, I keep the trash, what we have now, where, wherever the threshold is, we're looking at whatever that is to make it exempt for me, that current twenty dollars that we have, be that most people. But anything that, because see, now we're trying to clean up the city, right? Now we're trying to clean up the city. Well, I give my numbers, in order to get a crew on average, let's say what we had was a five-man crew. Usually on average, right, at, on a median, you need about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of just sound as a home. Then by the time you add two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars of equipment, you're looking at close to five hundred thousand dollars. That's adding, adding in to a different use and all that. That's not counting the maintenance and makeup and all that. So, but that's one, one, mostly everybody will, well, a one-time startup of five hundred thousand dollars if we add to have a crew. Annual one-year, you're right, it's always gonna get bigger if you don't. But we have to put something there where, as you said, everybody that has a household that pays the water, if you don't pay that, that whole water, and if it gets cut out because you refuse to pay, well, I'm tired of it. I mean, but at some point, we are absent. We are, there's no citizen above anybody else in this city. We should all look at each other's equal parts. It's twenty-two thousand, it takes twenty-two thousand equal parts to be absent. And being forty, this end is forty-five hundred thousand. If we had eight, even if we had eight dollars for the water payment, that would only bring us up to twenty dollars. We just still will know what a lot of people are paying. But I'm just saying, whatever we add, we make where it can't be exempt, regardless of age, age. I mean, that's what I should be able to say.
I like the tiered point, I think that's, you know, because, I mean, a lot of people are on this to come and act very easily. The reality of all this is, we're not gonna make everybody happy. I mean, it is what it is, and we can't continue to make individualized concepts for each one person in this city. We have to think about the majority as a whole. And so I think moving forward, there's a collective idea that, yes, we have to get back to a point where we're doing this, but we have to create another idea on how we're going to do this effectively. And so I just think that's where we're at at this point. So, I mean, maybe if we can do some research on that, and how that would be constructed and figure out how we would use the money, see if we could get a few, you know, machinery, how that would work. I think maybe we should just go ahead and look into that.
Let me say this to everyone, to what everybody says. It's very explicit in the state and the city ordinance to present such as, it's very, it's very...
It's also mandatory.
Mandatory, right, so, but what is happening, I just want you all to read it, but what has happened is the same thing that happened with our other workers. Is that when we are arbitrarily changing and not abide by, that's, that's, it's already states who did. But when people come and say, well, someone said it is exempt, this, that's not what the law says. We, we're talking about, they didn't, that's not a phenomenon for fun, eh? Why? Because we're just not collecting from what we need to collect from. And, 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 and people come and say, because someone said that we've got to a point where we've become so passive that we allow that to be the excuse, but that's how the law is said. So everything that is, that's why we're accountable. Once we stop holding people accountable, which we've had to do, and then another thing, and saying, this, we can't keep doing this, that's not what the law says, because nobody can ever tell me, show me anything right, because the right instead says, who can be exempt?
There's only money for sharing.
That's it, that's, that's it.
So much worse, but that's...
So, 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 that's, that's all. So we, almost a million dollars in the riches from collecting because we're not about that.
Not enforcing what we have.
Right, so I, I, I don't actually start enforcing this thing, but we gotta understand, that's what the state says, that's what's mandatory. So all of a sudden, when we say, I'll turn, we say, and people, people are talking about it, okay? And that's what we're not to, but we got no people accountable, then that's up to the council, maybe we'll come second. All we're doing, because that's all the time the state, we're finding, I wasn't right.
If we name this out, if we don't name this, I don't see, you know, but if we name it, the street department's flesh law. You know, you, you would be there, bro.
I mean, ultimately, I just, I feel like we keep having these conversations. I think that we just need to, we know what we want to do, there's, we're on the same playing field of, of the idea of what we want to do. We just kind of figure out a way to do it effectively. I feel like we just gotta get to that point.
Yeah, the problem, the reason it used to be kind of all of the water, all of the water fee, that we used, every bit of your garbage got paid through the water department back in the day. The reason is, somebody paying the garbage fee, if the water's cut off, if they don't pay the garbage fee, the city still has to pick up the garbage, because it creates a health risk for the people that aren't paying. You can't not pick it up. So, we, we don't have a solution, you know what I mean? So you gotta have, you know, whether, if the water company would allow us to, to run it back through there, then shoot, run it back through there.
We do have a way of retrieving that, and I talk about, there's, it's already, because the water company does it. And we have done it to other people, where we are talking to the water company, there is a way. And also, you read that, Bruce, there's nothing we can't overcome. So there's alternatives that we have. But I think one of the key things is, if we focus on this to, to the T, and there's no exceptions, then I, we won't have that conflict, but the exception today. And if anyone has a soul source, and that's all they're getting, is social security, there's the answer. But when we exempt people from working worldwide, that's what's happening.
So can we get finance to give us an assessment of if we run it through Water Works, exactly how much would we have to charge each citizen in the city?
Yeah, I'll get that for, but I don't think that's really the biggest problem, getting evidence back, but we're working it out.
What I would, what I would suggest we do is, is ask David if you can define what it costs for about equipment for a third crew? And what kind of cost are we looking at in salaries and benefits?
I do have one comment that just wanna make y'all all aware of. Even with the one additional crew, you're talking about at least six months for that one crew to get through the city for trash. That's keeping the schedule we have on rush now. If we use all three of those crews as combination trash, rush like we used to do, your schedule is completely obliterated. You're talking a couple of months-ish per house. So, just know that that decision is going to, to bring up that it's been sitting out here for two months.
I, I guess I would just get a little confused. Like, even when we were at the Leaky's and Hallies meeting, you know, talking to other cities, they have an exact schedule. You know, even cities as many as ours, whereas, you know, even small old ours, they have, you know, hey, we, we do this most week, or we do this twice a week, or we do this. Like, I'm, I'm just confused on how other cities maintain a schedule. But we don't, I, I, I don't know how that works. I'm just confused on that.
You're saying, you're saying, uh, here, here with the rules, that, that's not a problem. When we change the rules as we know.
That's not realistic, though. You can't say that every other city citizens are adherent rules, and we can't say this is the only city that's not.
That's not what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is that if everybody, the majority of people are not adherent to what's in place, that's all I'm saying. Because I don't know what other cities would do.
No, I agree, I agree. I'm just saying how, if we set this schedule, we say, "Hey, this is what we're doing on today. If your trash is not out there, well, sorry, you didn't put your trash out there. We'll have to get it to it next week." And we, as council people, just have to be certain and saying, "Hey, well, you missed that day, you didn't put it out."
But the thing about it, we do have a, a one for trash, but when we add another trash, we do have a rule for trash. That's what we can get the blue truck for. There's a schedule for trash, but when we change it.
I know, I know what you're saying, but I'm saying other cities have a trash, and they also have a city that does fit. But I'm just confused on how, and I'm understanding that they have to be scheduled, but we're saying we can't create one. I'm just confused on that.
We do create one. It just, you, you can't tell, you can't determine. I mean, when the truck is full, the truck is full. They've got to drive to the landfill, which is a thirty-minute drive out there, ten, fifteen minutes to dump the, the truck, and a thirty-minute drive back. So, you do that three times a day, we just got five hours to work out of that crew instead of eight hours to work out of that crew. Now, next week, they may only have to do it twice. And one week, they may have to do it five times, depending on what's going on. So you can't, you can't predict, you know, how that's gonna happen, but it, we do have, we've always had a schedule. Hey, we're on, we're on the east side this week, we're on the west side this week, we're on the east side this week, we're on the west side this week. That's the way it's always been.
We have a schedule, a schedule of that. I don't know what the other cities did. I don't know what, how they do that. I don't know what kind of workforce they have, but I know our workforce does more than our family's trash. I think they have a work form that's dedicated directly to trash. I don't know. But to think about it, if we make up a schedule, and we've done that before, we made up a map, and try to follow the map, or if something comes up, and we're taking out that schedule, I, I don't, I don't know. Because these guys, they're not that job, not just pick up trash. If a road goes out or something, they have to pull off and then that schedule fall behind. We've done schedules before, but what it's got, that, that gets the council to be done, because we can't get that schedule, because we have to pull off or something else. So I don't know what the other cities, but I just know, only thing I can speak to that is, it's hard for the whole schedule and making sure that we comply with that schedule. And that's, that's the problem we have.
Let me ask you this. We obviously have an inordinate amount of trash in three armed streets right now because we're trying to enforce policy that purchases is reducing to allow us to enforce. Uh, I mean, that's the short end of it. Uh, but if we got caught up, if we got it to a point where it was normal, would three crews, two that work for rush, and one that work trash be adequate, satisfy the needs of our city?
That's, that's an unanswerable question. What we would have to do is clean it up and see what the volume is on a regular basis. Because remember, for the last two and a half years, we've been dealing with COVID, and people being at home and cleaning and dumping. So now that we're back to working and people go, I think it will be less, but I can't say that until we got everything cleaned up. So, that's an unanswerable question at this point. Hopefully, it's fine.
You'd have to take six months.
Says six months to get it cleaned up, but that's, but that didn't give it, so, um, he's still cycling back through. But I, I, I was just trying to kind of figure in my mind, I wondered if, my thought process was if we, if we did add that third crew, if we did figure out how to do this financially and make it work, and we continued to do these sled dumpsters quarterly in different areas of our community, do you think we could get, because they seem to be well-used and on the days that we've got those out there, they're, they're getting, getting filled. So, and now I don't know if they're coming from parts of the county to dump that stuff, or where they're coming from, but those things should fill up, I know that. Uh, so, maybe a combination of the two up, where you do keep those quarterly kind of pickup weeks for people to kind of do this spring cleaning, if you will, uh, on a quarterly basis, or we'll call it the COVID clean, and, uh, and then you still have, then you have regular pickup for the various and sundry things, you know, over there.
Could we increase it to four days to eight times a year, and then just offset the, the other three, maybe four times?
I mean, I'm just over here with that. I mean, the county, because never get into just bathing in people. If you have four free county days, and then we're already adding four city days, and then we're saying, "Hey, we're gonna go back and clean up." I mean, I think that's efficient. I wouldn't necessarily put more on our staff than doing, going back to that, then adding more of those additional days. I just thought, I would say that's being efficient.
Well, yeah, clearly we have to continue to look at this, I don't believe we can figure it out.
I think we can do it, we can do that.
Yeah.
So, so I, I, what council is tasked and staffed with is to coordinate the Water Works as well as Public Works to get some type estimate that we have that approved. Is there anything else that?
I'm just feeling that tiered.
I mean, I think this is a great idea. People have different, I mean, that's what we have to do, so.
This is something that applies to everybody, uh, every board. But one of the, I, I mentioned two weeks ago, one of the biggest complaints I get are people who have these nice lawns, and they have good grass cuttings on top of their grass, and it's killing it. And so they're, you know, I get a lot of that. And I did read that a couple offers a service in some places where you have a different color trash can, and you can put your grass cuttings and all that in that one, and they can take it up, it's like five dollars a month a mower. And I think these people who have this grass that they, that they, that they care about and all this, not, not damaging it, I don't think it, they're their mind, maybe five hundred dollars to get that thing to go. I would like to see.
Then do that, and apply it with recycling.
Well, you know, we tried recycling, we probably wouldn't do it.
The problem is that it comes by, and you didn't have enough people subscribing. They have that problem again with the.
You could, but.
That's a good idea.
But then you'd pay more than the chairman to do it.
All right, by the way, also, just, if we could change, you can see, the visiting party, if they can, we can, I don't know, so.
The garbage fee by state law, that you charge for collection of garbage, uh, has to exempt off people who are, who sell source income associated. Uh, and you cannot disconnect water for failure to bring garbage. Uh, that's, your rights and utilities is considered a process for all you, and you can't disconnect one for failure to pay another. So that, now coordinate, now whether or not there's additional fees that the city can charge, uh, that you would use to provide, you know, additional refuse and collection services, yeah, I'm sure you can do, you can come up. You can assess fees that are reasonable. That's different than the household garbage. What I'm hearing, it sounds like it's different than the household or picking your garbage up every week. That's a different service we're talking about for picking up big things that people show us.
What you're saying now is, we can't go after them. We can't turn off the water. So at what point can we start legal proceedings to suit any of that?
Well, you can suspend, you can suspend the service. Now, the problem you have there is that the collector is not getting paid. So you're gonna have to, in order, if someone's not paying their garbage bill, you're gonna have to get the collector's cooperation, have them stop collecting at the location. See, they, they, they're getting paid if nobody pays, right? And that's probably why we have such low rates, is because we incur all the risk of non-payment. Uh, you know, people that are, if, who do we use? Republic? All right, if Republic has to bill and collect for everybody, they're gonna be charged a higher rate. Uh, and because there's labor and risk involved in that service. Uh, so by the city paying it as a lump sum and then billing it out to citizens, we're able to get that lower rate, but now you're subsidizing it for the people who won't pay. You've got a disconnect between the collector and the biller. Uh, so there's kind of a structural problem. Now, I don't know when the service comes up for renewal. Typically, we do it over a year.
It's just a good reflection. And you're not, and we, just like Bruce said, we pay for, pay the house. That's what we're paying for. That's what we're paying for the house, none of the houses we're paying for. But there is a way to get back through tax, actually.
Thirty days after you send a notice of delinquency, you can suspend service, or you can, uh, file a claim as off-claim as court, and then there's this other method. And you can start, you can start citing people. It could be a misdemeanor offense. People get cited, get a fine after you pay their garbage fee, and you have to go to the court and deal with it. Those are your remedies, but, uh, running, I don't think the answer's gonna be to run it through Water Works so that they can disconnect water service. I think that won't hold up legally. Charging additional fees for other services that aren't part of the garbage collection fee, that you could do. So, I don't think, uh, feedback from Water Works at all.
Well, Chris, let's say, as you suggested, you know, these discussion points have been raised. You just have to work on those, and we'll try to get this worked out in June or July, because we really hate to. Okay, Chris, so you got the answers for our street, street closure requests?
Well, let me, this first, because I think we got in the consent agenda about the abandoned water conservation fund.
Yes, sir.
Granting the plan for, I don't, uh, uh, you listen, I don't think we really brought it before the work session, and I stopped on here, and I will make sure we discuss that again, the grant and the trying for that, our grant, right, for. Now, the, uh, that fund, that conservation fund now, before was only, I think, maybe fifty thousand dollars at one time, two, three, four, five.
Fifty thousand, that would be higher than prices now.
Five hundred thousand. So what we're trying to do is maybe, as we talk about, when we talk about these, uh, capital improvement plan, co-watering is one of those. This may be the opportunity that we can actually get that five hundred thousand dollars to actually get what we have, the city has, look at it, number, and say, "I know something about what the city's only, only, only gonna stick for." That's not a true estimate. That's just what, what it costs to do co-watering, to where we're trying to get back. We've got partners, the judge committee that the council already said they would do something on there when we got there. So we got partners who can make examples, but with the, then five hundred thousand dollars, this is our opportunity maybe to get co-watering out to that trail a year, and that will have a great economic impact. We do have, we do always have funds targeted from that, from that, uh, bond. It was just being on the capital improvement plan, but I think now is the time to move forward, and I think, uh, Sarah, by her, her, her homework, and she seems to think from her, as, out of analysis, we have a seven, five percent chance of getting this right, so. And that's, that's why I wanted to get it for council, and so we got a chance to do this. And if we can do that, that will be game changer, especially by now and time.
Oh, no, you're complimenting that with people dying the trail, the rest of the trails, you know, absolutely. By doing that, the incentive.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I think the rest of the council, another discussion, but again, one of those things that we've got to, that we have looked at, we have adamant for grade possessions and other public incentives. We've always had that in place. I don't know if we're getting, got out of hand to now, we are allowing people to close all public streets to traffic for block art, for birthday, for everything. We're actually, I don't know, I can't find another city that say, "I wanna have my ten-year-old birthday party, I wanna close off the street." We're closing our street out. We're closing our free field. We used to just close off field. The council would do something, or they had something within the community, a, a party within the community, like the, uh, Halloween and other things, downside when they have it. We're closing our, because there, but we've gotten to a point, and it's getting dangerous, because what we do is we drop off, uh, barricades in the street and say, "Y'all close it off, and we'll pick it up on, on Monday." Do you notice, I say, when we get to those barricades and not bar and anything? So anybody can come and hold that street out. We've had a person say, "I wanna do a party for my, 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 my two-year-old son." And the next thing you know, it was turned off. I, you get something on, on, on Facebook, and they give it to me. We're getting, we have a block mark down on this area, in that area. I think we have to get back to where we were before, that we only do this, only do that, we stopped doing these arbitrarily closing streets off of birthday parties and all these other things. Because I don't think it's fair for a citizen to have to go and reroute themselves to a ten-year-old birthday party, and other things that we do. I don't know how we got here, because it wasn't like that, but that's where we got now. But I want to, I, I, before council before, because I don't want anybody calling me councilor, "That can't be my birthday party anymore, because they're letting it close off the street." Because we're leaving those barricades, but I'm leaving that one man. We set ourselves up for a, a lot of mistakes. And I, 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 I'm afraid of it, so.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but I, I'm not sure if we could just do a blanket thing, so, you know, or unless, something for the council. The reason why I say that is, a couple of weeks ago, Bicycle Association had a street party, uh, in front of their headquarters, and it was across from the pier. And these people, people from all over the state, and I would say there were four hundred people there. and these people, people from all over the state, and I would say there were four hundred people there. I mean, we start, we could tell by the amount of food we started, and that's a huge economic impact to Anderson, so I'm just wondering.
He's not saying that we would restrict that, he, those, those kind of events, I mean, that was sort of the, the state championship, high school bike race, is what that was, so, yeah, that was, it, that's no different, quite frankly, than the criteria, or, uh, some of those kinds of things, or, or freeriders, or the ribbon cutting at the court, at the federal courthouse, those kinds of things, are, are community events, they're not individual events, uh, you know, and, my, my logic on that, on birthday parties and stuff like that is, that's why we have parks. That's why we have parks, get you some food, go to the park, you gotta have that big birthday.
Well, anyway, I'm just gonna let you go back, I, we're gonna send, I'm gonna have to actually send something out, let people understand, make sure they understand that, only for certain, like, and if they want to use a birthday, so they can use a, a box or put it in the census, so, okay, I'm. We, we have an ax, and we, and I think it was a great idea, to, 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 the schools and I had this discussion, I had a discussion with, uh, standard of the council members, we are asking to, from the council and the school board to have a meeting together, so we can hide this out, and say, this is what needs to hide, so we're not getting all the requests, but so many of them. They have agreed, and they'll ask if the thirteenth or the fourteenth of June will be available for everyone, if you give me a day, the school board is all yours.